I'm in.
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
I'm Mr. Foyce.
Here.
All right, thank you. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? All right, thank you. The pledge will be led by at-large council member, Rob Nichols.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the agenda as proposed, as well as the approval of the minutes of the February nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular session and February twenty twenty-four special session as presented.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who's opposed? We have an agenda. First up on the agenda, I have a proclamation and I would like to call Director Abraham Funches up with me. How you doing, sir? Today, we will have a proclamation that's read concerning ceasefire for the Israeli-Gaza conflict. And it reads, whereas the city of Waterloo has a longstanding commitment to advocating for peace, justice, oh, I'm sorry, please come up. Peace, justice, equity, safety, and fostering mutual respect and understanding for all people, regardless of religion, race, gender, or nationality. And whereas the majority of nations in the U.N. have voted in favor of a peaceful resolution, and millions of people worldwide, including residents of Waterloo, have joined in peaceful protests since October seventh to amplify this call. Whereas since October eighth, twenty twenty-three, the day following the attacks by Hamas militants on Israel, Waterloo City leadership has publicly acknowledged the ongoing violence and humanitarian crisis impacting Gaza and the West Bank. And whereas hundreds of thousands of lives are at imminent risk without an immediate permanent ceasefire restoration of basic necessities and delivery of adequate and unconditional humanitarian aid without delay to Palestinian civilian noncombatants. And whereas Islamophobia, antisemitism, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry have risen significantly across the United States and around the world with direct impacts on communities from synagogues and mosques to schools, university homes, offices, and places where communities gather, as well as protest and rallies. And whereas all of these forms of bigotry, violence, and oppression serve to divide our communities and weaken our efforts to achieve collective safety, justice, and true multi-ethnic, multiracial, multireligious democracy here and everywhere. And whereas on January eleventh, twenty twenty-four, the Human Rights Commission discussed and voted unanimously to send a resolution deemed important to the diverse residents and constituencies that the council represents. And whereas on February fifth, twenty twenty-four, the City of Waterloo Council held a work session to discuss the resolution submitted by the Human Rights Commission. And whereas on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, through the first of several courageous conversations forums, the Human Rights Commission held a public meeting asking for engagement and testimonies from people impacted. And courageous conversations require bravery, the courage to listen deeply, to challenge assumptions, and to embrace diverse perspectives. And whereas the City of Waterloo is calling for an immediate ceasefire, along with the growing number of cities throughout the country that have approved or are actively considering statements calling for ceasefire calling for a ceasefire resolution and safe return of all hostages and increased humanitarian aid. And whereas international organizations, including the United Nations, General Assembly, World Health Organization, U.S. Agency for International Development, and International Rescue Committee have made calls for a ceasefire and the return of the remaining hostages to prevent the further loss of civilian lives and be in accordance with international law. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Quinton of Hart, do hereby proclaim, the City of Waterloo calls for an immediate ceasefire and affirms that all life is precious. We unequivocally condemn the killing of Israeli civilians by Hamas militants, and we unequivocally condemn the killing of noncombatant Palestinian civilians by the State of Israel. And the City of Waterloo affirms its commitment to combat anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab bigotry, antisemitism, and Islamophobia. And the City of Waterloo affirms its support for the rights of all people, including the residents of Waterloo, to live, learn, work, play, worship, and engage in peaceful protests, all without intimidation, coercion, or the threat of violence. And the City of Waterloo unequivocally condemns all forms of violence and tolerance, racism, and xenophobia, including the recent rise of antisemitic Islamophobia, anti-Jewish, and anti-Arab sentiments, rhetoric, and attacks in our region and across the nation. The City of Waterloo resolves that the Waterloo Human Rights Commission will provide a copy of this proclamation to the Waterloo State and federal representatives and the President of the United States. And so, we've been talking about this for, what, six to eight weeks, even longer than that. But, and there's been some conversation about do a proclamation, do a resolution. But after speaking with Director Funches today, it has been brought that the commission would like to continue with the proclamation in which we did. But do you have some comments, sir?
Well, we just want to thank you for the proclamation. We thank you for all of the advocates who have been supportive behind this particular effort. We just want the community to know that we're not doing anything in opposition to those who are for the Gaza citizens, pro-Palestinian impulses throughout the community. We just hope that this is a start and that it will continue to bring people together so that we can all get what we want. Yes, we've already had a courageous conversation on February fifteen. We look forward to having several more courageous conversations using study circles methodology in order to try to bring the citizens together to bridge understandings throughout the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and normally, we normally do our proclamations at alternate times. But this is one where we had countless work sessions talking about it, so we wanted to make sure that we read that one aloud. But, all right, it's also time for oral presentations, your opportunity to address the city council on non-agenda-related items. State your name and address for the record and let us know your thoughts.
Charlie Grove, fourteen twenty-six Shamrock Drive. We did not ask for a proclamation for a ceasefire. We asked for a resolution for a ceasefire. A proclamation is a non-enforceable thoughts and prayers fancy document to make us feel better and to make the noise outside go away. But the noise outside isn't going to go away. The noise outside is only going to get louder because this is just another example of you not listening to your constituents. You're just deciding what we want. And it's not what we want. There's going to continue to be disruption. There's going to continue to be legal peaceful disruption. We are not going to be quiet about this. We're not going to shut up about this just because you think you can come in here and just say thoughts and prayers. We care about all of the people dying in Palestine, but we don't actually want to do anything actionable about it. And it's just like everything else. No one wants to take action. Everyone wants to just say the thing and have everyone believe it. But sorry, if you care about people, you have to show you care about people. You can't just say, I care about people, and have everyone think that you care. Okay? We need actions, not words. There's a lot of things in this town that aren't getting listened to, you know? So many people come up here and they talk about stuff, and you say, oh, we'll talk to you, we'll talk about it, but nothing is ever done. And people are only getting in more and more dire situations here in the Cedar Valley and in Palestine. I am trying not to become doomed, you know? I'm trying not to feel like everything is worthless and that I should just give up because there's no point in changing anything. They say when you can't make change at a higher level, you're supposed to do it locally. But what happens when you bring stuff up locally and the people in charge decide they aren't even going to have a vote? They're just going to decide to do something that's non-actionable and is just thoughts and prayers. I feel really sorry for the people of this city because we're getting, pardon my language, but we're getting screwed, you know? We, so many people in this community are working class. So many people are working their butts off and they're not getting anywhere because the government of the city does not care about the city. And I would like the government of the city to start caring about the city and not just the business interests or, you know, where your funding is coming from for your next election. You should be worried about the people organizing right now and the voting blocks that are being created and that you are pissing off.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
My name is Larry Stummey. I live at one zero zero eight Lewis Lane. March seventh is the fifty-ninth anniversary of Selma, Alabama's bloody Sunday. About a dozen of us from the Urban Training Center in Chicago answered Martin Luther King's call to join him on March ninth for a march to Montgomery to open the voting rights of all, especially for Black Americans. When we arrived on that Tuesday, the ninth, we were led by Martin Luther King and hundreds of us as we walked through the town from the church to the bridge. As we walked up the bridge, we saw hundreds of police officers ahead of us, and we were ready to do whatever it would take to go on. And then all of a sudden, Dr. King asked us all to kneel down and pray. And we walked back to the church. We learned later that evening from Dr. King that he had negotiated with the Attorney General in the United States that they would, the National Guard would be called up to protect the marchers to Montgomery. On the positive side, I'm thankful for the many gains in voting and civil rights in the U.S. state, in the United States, that resulted from the Selma march. But at the same time, I'm saddened and angry about the lack of progress for Black Americans in America and in Alabama, and the United States, and in Waterloo. After forty-nine years, voting rights for Blacks are challenged by racist laws and Supreme Court rulings. Economic benefits for Blacks lag behind nationally and locally by the disparity in housing, family wealth, schools, members incarcerated, and unemployment. Changes to this racial disparity that exists in our land requires that all of us, especially you, who are elected to serve the vulnerable, to take action to eradicate the evils of racial disparity. As President Truman is famous for saying, "The buck stops here." Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Hart, members of the council, I am Forrest Dilavu. I live at seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. Last week, I read in the newspaper of a decision the Waterloo Schools did to buy a piece of ground at Huntington and Kattowski. This piece of ground is in the floodplain. Those are my words. It's in the floodplain. This piece of ground is assessed at fifty-one thousand, sold in twenty nineteen for a hundred and eighty-five thousand. The Waterloo School is paying seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred dollars. Part of the reason they are doing this is they were told by the City of Waterloo that this is not in the floodplain. I have a floodplain map, if any of you wanted to see it after the meeting. This shows a portion of it is in the hundred-year and some more of it is in the five-hundred-year floodplain. So they went ahead and bought this as if this was prime development land. And that price is probably appropriate for prime development land. Then they went on to state, the school system did, that the city had told them, should this need any holding ponds, any eradication of storm water, that the city would take care of that. They would do that. I am very concerned about seven hundred and twenty-nine, eight being spent for a piece of property, and I'm even more concerned that the city has agreed to take care of any water problem that's in that ground that's in the floodplain. This is not right. You're committing us to spending X amount of dollars and nobody knows what it is. And this is the wettest place in the city of Waterloo. Proof is, we all had to put in sump pumps to try and keep our basements dry. And if the city participates in this and makes more water shed off of that by raising it, putting in a holding pond, there's no way for that water to get over the levee that's down there, just hundreds of feet away. I sent a message to the school board before their vote, and another citizen went there, and their understanding was, the city said, it's not in the floodplain. We can build or do anything we want to there. I think it's time the city look at each and every agreement you make and hold to the facts. As you buy these pieces, go out and look at them. That's what I do. When I see you're going to buy something, I get in my car and I go look at it. And I suggest each and every one of you do the same. You're spending taxpayer dollars. You should know exactly what you're doing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yeah. Forrest, did you know who said, who said, the city said, and did you have a?
Jamie Knutson, city engineer. I've had one meeting with the school board or with a member from the school and with one of Envision's architects back in January. As Mr. Dilavu pointed out, there is a portion, a small portion of that property that is in the floodplain, but Noel can get up and speak to this, but there is nothing that would prohibit development in the hundred-year floodplain. They just have to follow the proper procedures. I did not in any way, shape, or form tell them that they were going to get out of having to do stormwater. That's, our ordinance requires them to have stormwater, and I, even if I wanted to, I don't have a legal authority. That'd have to go through council. Council would have to approve that. So I'm not sure where that got started, to be honest with you. We will review their plans like we do any other business or any other development to make sure that it meets the floodplain ordinance as well as our stormwater detention ordinance.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else, please?
I'm Michael Blackwell. I live in Cedar Falls. On March fourth, two thousand and twelve, my father turned seventy-nine years old, and soon, in a few weeks, he had a massive stroke. As far as I can remember, he was always employed working in a tour, as a tour lane operator on an assembly line for a company that made airplane and helicopter parts under federal contract for the military. He was a very good machinist, but he was angry and distraught as people with less seniority than him got promoted before him. It was only after twenty-plus years that he managed to become a foreman, a few years before he retired. When he began, we lived in an apartment in an area where there were sixteen eight-story buildings and an economically depressed community in Bridgeport, Connecticut. After seven years, we were able to move to the next town north, Stratford, over in a three-bedroom ranch house in a working-class neighborhood. Moving north to Stratford resembled having the vision of a promised land for those from Holmes County, Mississippi, beginning in nineteen eleven to Waterloo and the great northward migration as described by Dr. Isabel Wilkerson in The Warmth of Other Sins. That vision was never realized to this day. It's been over a century since Blacks settled in boxcars in Waterloo. The racism they experienced in housing, income, mobility, et cetera, has morphed and fluctuated over the decades. But its harshness is as pervasive as it was for their initial arrival. Perhaps we are so used to it that we're anesthetized and silent over the injustice and inequity. We do not invest our energies to ensure that meaningful and marked improvements are in the offing. Whereas it is nice to have entertaining escapes from the substandard quality of life people have, they do not address and redress the urgent needs of people in the community. So we must be earnest in actualizing the city's vision, the vision of twenty thirty, which is only six years away. Thank you.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Beverly Cosby. I live at three fifteen Window Court. And I just have really one question, and I don't know who to ask, but if there's somebody here that can help me answer this question. If we wanted to, and how would we get Smokey Row designated as a historical area? I feel that once we could do, once we do that, that would open up the area for grants, better housing opportunities, and the fact that, as Dr. Blackwell so noted, this is the interest that many of the Blacks that have, that came to Waterloo came to on the railroad. So my question is, who can and how can we get that area designated as a historical area so that it can open up some of the economic benefits that are out there for, just like? Let me think. I can't even think. Over here by, by, by the Boys Club.
Block away from there?
Walnut. Walnut, Walnut Court. I'm sorry. I even lost my train of thought. But how can we, over here in our neighborhood, get that done? So if somebody can give me that answer or what the process is or what needs to be done to get it done, please let me know because I feel that that area is being neglected and there's things that can be done to elevate it, just like we did Walnut Court.
All right. Designated?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. So there's two designations. There's a local designation that we can do through the Waterloo Historic Preservation Commission, which I think is what we did for Walnut Neighborhood. There's also a national designation. We'd have to hire a consultant to fill out the full application and do a little bit more research on. So we can, we can look into both avenues and probably move faster with the local designation and then look at the national one as well.
Part of the, part of the synergy around Walnut, the church that was there, they traveled and they went places like Minnesota to try to figure out what type of economic, I forgot what it's called, for a community, not community development, but is it a CDFI?
CDFI, yep.
So they brought together a group. They brought together a developer in there. And from there, a lot of those things started to happen. And so, they don't necessarily get money because of a national. They got money from some of the local foundations and philanthropy. But the first thing they had was the organization that was there. Plus, they found a developer right off the bat that would be able to go in and remodel houses and do all those things. So there was several different pieces that were put in place. So definitely open to the conversation. I don't know how much with a historic designation, would that, how does that have an impact? Does that make, you can't, is it, you can only do certain upgrades to housing? Or how does that actually work? Do you know, I think?
I mean, it'll depend a little bit on whether or not they're using historic tax credits at the state and federal level or if they're not. Obviously, you know, there's, there's differing levels of eligibility of the houses out there too, which we have some of that information from the, from the recent grant that we did out there. So we'll have to look at that information, look at an overall nomination process on both processes and then figure out, as you noted, Mayor, finding a developer to help us move ahead with that, with the neighborhood.
And one of the things we did, we tried to apply for a railroad grant for two phases. One, to take a look at how we could move the railroad or the main, the main, the main rail yard, the switcher, to move it out further back from the community so there wouldn't be all the blockages there. And the second part of that grant was to write a economic development grant and plan for the entire neighborhood surrounding that. So we were unsuccessful with that grant. But that doesn't mean we can't come back and maybe look to see if somebody can write a plan together for the economic development portion of it. But we need players. We need the churches. We need folks to come together and start with the progress. And that's how it happened with, and I'd sit down with you, councilwoman, and you if you would like to, so I can show you exactly what happened throughout the process and how it got to where it was at as well, if you're interested, so. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I believe Charles Pearson, was it, did some historical analysis as well of that area. So we do have some research.
Right.
Yeah.
But we can sit down and talk next week. Alright, is there anyone else that would like to comment, going a second time?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
You wanna come up, sir? Please do.
My name is Nasir Sahir, I live on Denver Street of Waterloo. I'm here to implore the city council to, to keep considering the resolution on the Palestinian situation, Palestinian-Israeli situation, the Gaza situation. In my opinion, it's, it's deplorable what's happening over there. And I understand that one of the city council members made the comment that it, it doesn't matter if you do a resolution, it's, has no effect. Well, a resolution in Waterloo, along with many resolutions around the country, do have an effect. If you take a stance on what's going on, it does have a, it does have some kind of effect to, as to the situation that's going on over there. There's obviously a lot of citizens, you saw the protest outside. I guess I'll just close by saying that I don't care where you stand on the situation. To allow that kind of, that kind of, those kinds of things happening to human beings, it, it's not a pro-Israel, pro-Palestine, pro, it's pro-human. You cannot stand there and watch children and women being killed every day and not have some kind of, some kind of say, some kind of, take some kind of position on the situation. So I implore you to keep considering it. If you put something on paper, it does have an effect, it does say something to the world in general. We may be Waterloo, small city in a, in a state in America, but I'm Arab-American, I'm African-American, but I'm also, I consider myself first and foremost a world citizen and as a world citizen, you have to, to see what's going on in the world and not allow that kind of thing to happen. If we allow that kind of thing to happen somewhere in the world, why would we object to anything else that's going on even in our, in America, in our country? So please keep considering it and we would, I would ask that at some point you get a resolution on paper. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Let me see, if anyone else has comments? Alright, so that concludes the public comments portion, Mr. Bozen?
I just had, I just had two things. And it has to do with like council communications in our, in our Civic Plus. And I would just like to encourage department heads to, to put more information in the council communications. Some are really good, I mean, when, when Noel fills it out, you can read that and get a brief synopsis of, of what the, what this item is. Some department has just basically copied what's written in the agenda and that's the only information we have in council communication. And I think it would benefit the public that they could be able to look at that and see a brief synopsis. And the other thing that I, I wanted to bring up is, I would like to ask all, all the departments to take a deep dive into our city website and, and just review what's in their department areas and, and look for any errors or corrections, because I've been, I've been deep diving into it and I'm, I'm constantly coming up with stuff. I would really appreciate it if they could do that.
No taking, no? Alright, anyone else, council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close public comments.
Second.
Motion been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Public comments closed.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of one A1, bill's payment for February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, in the amount of four million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred fifty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents, and for March fourth, in the amount of eight hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars and eleven cents.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Am I able to, I guess I can pull the Fourth Street Bridge for additional questions?
Um, yes, we can pull.
Would you?
Number seven on the consent agenda, if I can pull that one.
I think it's six and, six and seven, right? Alright.
Six and seven.
Alright, so roll call vote for the items other than six and seven.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final quantity summary with K&amp;W Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, for a net increase of three hundred seven dollars and ninety cents in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, Fourth Street Bridge and Dam Lighting Project, contract number one zero five four, and authorizing mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And next is to approve a resolution approving completion of project and recommendation of acceptance of work for work performed by K&amp;W Electric, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of six hundred ninety-six thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars and twenty cents in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, Fourth Street Bridge and Dam Lighting Project, contract and, contract number one zero five four, and receive and file a two-year maintenance bond.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Hey, just a quick question for someone, or Chris or Jamie or Noel. Are they, so for our contractual portions of the work that was done by K&amp;W, is that project completed? Is there more work to do? Is there, are the systems communicating or can someone give an update?
Jamie Knudsen, city engineer. Talking with the consultant, everything that was bid for the project has been completed. That's why we've put it on. My understanding is there is some additional programming that has been asked for between Public Works and Main Street. And that can be done, but there needs to be, that would be a change order. And at the time, we had already finished up our portion of the work and had filed the maintenance bond and it would have required additional costs from the contractor to file new maintenance bonds for us and all of that. So we've elected to go ahead and close that out. Public Works and/or Main Street just needs to have K&amp;W come in and, and show them what little extra programming, my understanding is, what little extra programming needs to be done. Doesn't sound like it's a very big charge, but they're willing to do it, they just wanna get paid for it.
And Randy, can you elaborate on the Public Works portion? Thank you, Jamie.
So Randy Bennett, Public Works Division Manager. So what, once it's all said and done, what some of the programming was is just the operation of it, you know, especially on our end, integrating with the other technologies. So unfortunately, we just didn't get it done in time before things were getting closed out. We're just making sure that, you know, the full operation of it, when it's fully operating, that we can, we're able to use it.
So the Public Works has a portion of this?
Yeah, cuz like sometimes, when, when they're doing the different colors, you know, you wanna do, there's some programming portions that we've been asked whether it be for, you know, I, I, we're updating all the different lightings, whether it be for the bridge downtown or this, Public Works gets involved with some of that. So we just wanna make sure that we have a thorough understanding on how it works too, if we have, get tasked, asked to make any changes.
So when they come back in and they program and connect it to the convention center and all those things, Public Works will contribute?
Correct. Or we'll, we'll get asked to contribute, cuz it, unfortunately, sometimes it does go through multiple departments.
Yeah, because we, we did a council-approved to bring Shakespeare back and take a look at connecting the convention center lights with the lights on the bridge. And so that was approved a while ago and so, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm just kinda wondering, so, alright. Counsel? Alright, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes, sorry, I was trying to fix my sound.
It's okay. Uh, and Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Right. Really quickly, on the rest of the consent agenda, there's a motion approving Alan Goodheart to the position of animal control pending physical and testing. There is also Brian Wertz to list a position of chief building inspector for the building department. And so are either one of you here this evening? I don't think so. You are? Alan. I wanna thank you so much for joining our team and we look forward to working with you in the future, so congratulations. So a newer, new, to the Leisure Services Commission, Dr. Robert Welch as well. And we have a person over to my right, your left, that may not look familiar, or may be, but Mr. Stephen Keergard is here. He is the brand-new airport director for the city of Waterloo. So we wanna tell you congratulations and I'm sure council would love to sit down and chat sometime as well. So congratulations and welcome. Did I miss anything else, probably? Alright, public hearings, can someone take number one, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four CIP pipelining phase one, one VB one, contract number one one zero two.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion's been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Hearing now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution confirming approval of specifications, bid documents, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, you have questions on item, anything? Alright, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file and instruct the city clerk to read the bids.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Clerk?
Okay, our estimate for the base bid was four hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars, eighty-four cents. Our estimate for bid alternate number one was ninety-six thousand, seven hundred seven dollars and seven cents, for a total bid estimate of five hundred and eighteen thousand, twenty-two dollars, ninety-one cents. Our first bidder was Institute Forum Technologies, U.S. LLC of Chesterfield, Missouri. They provided five percent security. Their base bid amount was six hundred twenty-two thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars, sixty cents, and their bid amount for alternate one was one hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred ninety, or excuse me, one hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-nine dollars, thirty cents. Our second and final bidder was Municipal Pipe and Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for the base was four hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars, twenty cents. And their bid for alternate one was one hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred seven dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving award of bid to Municipal Pipe Tool Company, LLC of Hudson, Iowa, in the amount of four hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars and twenty cents, reserving the right to authorize part or all of the work described in alternate one, for one hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred seven dollars, approving the contract bonds and certificate of ins, uh, insurance in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four CIP pipelining phase one VB one, contract number one one zero two, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing, and that's for the twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-six, right-of-way mowing contract.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment on right-of-way mowing? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera, and authorizing to proceed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel, questions? Right, Madam Clerk, uh, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Leisure Services Director for review.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Alright.
Okay, so our first bidder was Professional Lawn Care of Waterloo, Iowa. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for option A per acre was eighty-six dollars, seventy-five cents. Option B per acre, eighty-two dollars, fifty cents. Option C per acre was eighty-nine dollars, seventy-five cents. Option D per acre, three hundred seventy-six dollars, fifty cents. Option E per mowing was seven hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty cents. Our second and final bidder is Adams Outdoor Contracting Incorporated. They provided five percent security. Their bid amount for option A per acre, seventy-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. Option B per acre, ninety-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents. Option C per acre, seventy-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. Option D per acre, two hundred forty-nine dollars, ninety-nine cents. And finally, option E per mowing, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Alright, thank you. Could someone say, can we do some of these together or how does that work?
We could open them all and close them all at the same time.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for a general obligation on bonds, ECP one, the issuance of not to exceed four million, two hundred thousand dollars, general obligation bonds for central corporate purposes. General obligation bonds, GCP two, the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds for general corporate purposes. General obligation bonds, GC three, GCP three, the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds for corp, general corporate purposes. And general obligation bonds, GCP four, the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars, general obligation bonds for essential, uh, corporate purposes.
Second.
Second.
Alright.
What's that, sorry? General corporate, general corporate for GCP. Okay, GCP four, for general corporate purposes.
Second.
Alright, the motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak regarding three, four, five and six?
David Dyer, thirty-one forty-five West Fourth Street. I guess my question is, what has been paid off in the last fiscal year? What have we bonded to date? And explain what corporate purpose, general purpose, essential purpose means. Lot of different terminologies out there that we in the cheap seats don't understand.
Yeah, yep.
Bridget Wood, Finance Director. Last year, the last fiscal year, I believe we paid around eleven million dollars off in our bonds. Again, scheduled to pay off around eleven or twelve million dollars in bonds this year as well. General corporate purposes are things that would consist of any improvements we have to do to any city buildings, buying certain equipment, unless it's for police and fire, that would be considered an essential corporate purpose. What was your other question?
General obligation.
So that general obligation is that we're able to levy for it, that we're able to tax for it?
I'm sorry.
We're able to tax for it? So it's a general obligation bond where we're able to, to tax for it? If I can get a better definition for you?
Don't we, as citizens, get taxed to pay for all the bonds?
Yes, mo, yes, most of them. Yes, mo, yes, most of them.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Bridget. All right, any other questions? And I believe, uh, six million this year and close six and then eleven million we paid off, will pay off this year unless, okay. All right, um. Want to close the hearings?
Oh, yeah. Uh, sorry, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution instituting proceedings to take act, additional action for the issuance of not to exceed four million, two hu, four million, two hundred thousand dollars, general obligation bonds. Uh, issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollar, general obligation bonds. Uh, issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars, um, in general obligation bonds. And then, uh, to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed seven hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bozen?
Just a quick question for Bridget. Uh, cause in her presentation today, she said that we're, the CIP bonding is going to increase for our twenty million dollars for fiber. But when, when, when Mr. Dyer asked if it was all paid for by the taxpayers now, are those fiber bonds are going to be paid for by user fees as, as they start bringing people on board? Is that correct?
Bridget Wood, Finance Director. Uh, yes, initially, we will be bonding for it and then the fiber utility will pay us back. And then we'll be able to, so this first year, we're bonding for the interest that we'll be paying on it. Um, but then once the fiber utility starts getting more users and having more revenue, we'll be able to offset what we levy for with what they're able to pay for.
Thank you.
Is that revenue? No?
It's not a revenue bond. A revenue bond has a higher interest rate, which is why we're doing a general obligation bond.
Decided to use twenty, okay. All right, thank you. Counsel? Uh, Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, could someone take? One, two, and three?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. First is a resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds, series twenty twenty-four, and levying a tax for the payment thereof. Number two, a resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan and disbursement agreement by and between the City of Waterloo and the Iowa Finance Authority, and authorizing, uh, and providing the, for the issuance and securing the payment of seven million, nine hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, sewer revenue capital loan notes, series twenty twenty-four A of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, under the provisions of Iowa, of the Code of Iowa, and providing for a method of payment of said notes, approval of the tax exemption certificate.
Second.
Oh, sorry, sorry. And number three, a resolution approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with H.R. Green, Inc., and originally executed on March first, twenty twenty-one, in the increased amount of twenty thousand dollars in conjunction with the twenty twenty-one EPA Brownsfield Hazardous Substances and Petroleum Assessment Grant.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there any questions or conversations about this one? Counsel?
Sir, I just had a question on number three.
Yes, sir.
If Noel could maybe explain did, what we're spending the additional twenty thousand dollars on?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. You may recall, we had the, uh, assessment grant, um, of three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred. That wasn't, I don't want to say citywide, but it was, it was, we had a lot of, of area around the city, primarily in the downtown area, Rath area, to be able to utilize those funds for, uh, looking at the assessment of properties, phase one and phase twos. The additional twenty thousand was specifically for the hardcore site. Uh, we wanted to have them go out there and do some additional work, um, ahead of, uh, moving ahead with the project that's going on up there. So we added it on to this, a larger grant, uh, to be able to move ahead faster with H.R. Green, who's been doing a great job for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? All right, uh, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Voice?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's go, um, four, five, and six.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement with Green Door Properties LLC located at fourteen twenty West Donald Street, in the amount of six hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents, and an additional a thousand dollars for removal of trees, for a total compensation of one thousand, six hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents, in conjunction with the Titus Lift Station and Force Main Project, and authorizing the mayor, city clerk to execute said document. Number five is adopting a resolution approving amendment to the development agreement, a minimum assessment agreement with Caymans, okay, Masonry LLC, originally executed on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, in conjunction with the project located at one, one, five Warp Drive, to extend the completion date to October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and extending the minimum assessment date, uh, to December thirty-first, twenty thirty-four, uh, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number six is resolution approving a real estate agreement with DiRay Investments LLC for property located at three, ten Upland Drive, in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars plus up to two thou, two hundred thousand in closing cost, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Is there anyone with questions about these, these three items? Please come up.
Forrest Dilavu, seventeen twenty-five Huntington Road. This is the property, a property that I have watched for years. At one time, it was going to be for military folks to be housed in this building, which would have been a wonderful deal. They weren't able to do it. This building today is one that you folks should look at before you vote on paying four hundred thousand dollars for it. It's an absolute sham. All the windows are out. The doors are broke. I drove by it today with my wife. The people that bought that last paid three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Now, we are going to pay that investor a profit, small profit, with that kind of investment, four hundred thousand. And when we take it, then we're going to have to tear it down because it's not fixed, not repairable. And it hasn't been through several of these. But we are guaranteeing this investor that he doesn't lose any money. But the taxpayers will lose money from today on. It's been paying taxes. I went over to courthouse and checked, they've been paying taxes. But that tax event will be wiped out as far as the general fund because it's in a TIF district. Anyone that builds anything there goes into the TIF for twenty years, nothing back to the citizens, other than the value of the land. I was, so what's land worth, bear? I don't know. These are the kinds of things we got to, we got to control our spending. We can't just continue to spend. We're running out of money, folks, out here. We are. You may not, but we are. I urge you to look at this before you spend the four hundred thousand. And maybe there's a better price. It needs to be down. I agree, one hundred percent. It needs to be down and gone. It's a terrible-looking thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Dyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. I have to totally agree with what Forrest said. I drove by there today myself, had to pull around on the grass to get by a glass all over the, the cement or blacktop driveway that was there. Every window, pretty much, is busted out of there. Some of them were boarded up. At one time, they wanted to put this into a, uh, Veterans Relief Center or whatever. I've talked to those people and they said they couldn't afford it. The roof leaks, all the windows are busted out now. It's a great brick building, but it's, it's trash. So is it really, it, it, I want to say it this way, I guess. If you were looking at investing in that property yourself, would you buy basic property and the value of the land? Or would you buy that piece of property and know you got to tear it down? You put that burden on the tax citizens of Parkers, uh, Parkersburg, that's where I grew up, of Waterloo. And it's not fair to us to have to take on that kind of burden for economic future development? It's in a TIF. So that's what we hear all the time. Every time I've asked that question, it's, well, for future economic development. And we never seem to sell it, we never seem to do anything with it. I haven't gotten a recent report, but the last time I knew, we had over seven hundred and fifty acres of industrial property that we could use, light industrial, commercial, whatever. And how much of that do we have left? How much have we marketed so far? It's not a burden that the taxpayers are going to continue to take on without some sort of, uh, consequences, unable, unability to pay? So then what are you going to do? Take my house because I can't pay my taxes? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right.
I have a question.
I want to wait, so we, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot we were hearing. Um, can I?
Have Noel come up and respond a little bit to some of my comments?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I think we're all in agreement that the building is in rough shape. Um, it's been vacant for a number of years. Um, we have looked at it, um, for trying to get redevelopment there, something positive back in the neighborhood. Um, as we're all aware, um, some of the, uh, things that we've been working on in Waterloo is to get reinvestment into our older neighborhoods to help stabilize or, or improve those values. This particular, uh, building, the current owner bought it for three hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. He has an appraisal that's, uh, says it's worth three hundred and eighty-five thousand. And of course, he has shown us, uh, that he has an architect on, on, on retainer to design it. Um, and that's costing him about seventy thousand in cleanup costs. And he is planning to move ahead with a potential, uh, ninety-unit, uh, project there. Um, we think that looking at this area, we'd like it, um, to be more single-family homes, um, or at least less density there. Um, so the four hundred thousand dollar was the amount negotiated with him, um, to cover his costs for buying it, cover his costs for cleanup and architect fees, uh, to try and move ahead.
Mr. Bozen?
Have, have we done a hazard assessment in that building on asbestos?
We have not yet. Um, as part of the acquisition contract, we have the ability to go in there and do phase one, and that'll include asbestos.
But, but why would we enter into this agreement if we don't know what our overall expenses for asbestos abatement's going to be? Because when it was built and it was boiler heat, it, chances are it's full of asbestos.
It's a pretty standard process, I guess, for, we have the ability to look at it, um, during the process, having the signed acquisition contract. And then we obviously have the ability, if certain, uh, things come to light that not, we're not aware of, to, to back out based on that environmental finding.
So, so my next question is, what would it, what's a ballpark estimate to tear it down? And get that site ready, gradable and ready for building on?
Obviously, it'll depend a little bit on the amount of asbestos in there. So we're, we're probably looking at, I mean, it depends on the time of year that we, we bid it out, as well as the amount of time we give them. Probably anywhere from hundred and twenty to hundred and sixty thousand.
So if we put six hundred thousand into it, and then we end up with a large asbestos bill, and then we, we tear it down and we make that land av- available for a developer that we're going to want to put houses on? And if we put, say, fourteen, fifteen lots between Fairway Lane and Upland, we're going to end up, as a city, having probably sixty thousand dollars per lot of our money in, in, into the, into each and every lot to, to build on. And then we have to address Fairway Lane, which is a, which is a private? Street, am I correct?
That is correct.
I'm, I'm down that road three times a week because my mom lives at the end, and at the nursing home. And, uh, i- if we don't do improvements to Fairway Lane in this development, then what we have is half of the houses are on a private street, half of the houses are on Upland. And then the people that want to build the, on the lots on Fairway are going to have to take care of their own snowmobile, or they're going to have to take care of their own street maintenance because that, that road is horrible right now to get up and down that thing. So, uh, there's, there's just so many unknowns with this project. And we would do a deep dive in, as far as I'm concerned, and, and what we would have per, price per lot. I'm a hundred percent believe that this, this should come down. I mean, I would like to see this developer, uh, uh, just let us tear it down and let them develop that, that land. I mean, I have no problem paying, paying to, to tear that down and, and he owns that land. And if he wants to develop it and sell lots, I, I think he'll come out ahead. But I think we're going to be seven hundred thousand dollars plus into this. And like I say, we're going to have fifty thousand dollars to seventy thousand dollars of city obligated money per lot, which chances are, we're going to, if we don't have a developer that's going to come in, we could give them the land for, you know, lots for a dollar, and then we have five thousand dollars on infill on each and every one of them. And so you, you, now we take another hundred thousand that we need for that project. So I just got a lot of, I just have a lot of apprehension in, in that, in that sale because it's a lot of money for the condition of that building, but the neighbors do need to get rid of it one way or the other. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, just, um, Mr. Bozen, you're saying two hundred thousand, you mean two thousand, right? My, my insist-
Two hundred thousand to tear it down.
Okay, okay, because you said four hundred-
Not, not the closing cost.
Okay.
Yeah, wasn't clear.
Well, let me see, are you finished? I'm sorry.
I am.
Yes, sir.
Um, Noel, if I may ask as well, uh, the gentleman asked what would happen with, we're, we're taking this money out of the general fund. And his question was, it would fall into a TIF district and that money would never be recovered into the general fund. Can you explain that to him as well as myself?
For the acquisition, we probably use, uh, either bonds or TIF funds, uh, to acquire it. Um, it was put into the, uh, the Martin Road TIF when we expanded it for the Burns Park Project, um, for some of the funding, um, options there. Obviously, we always have the ability to release fund, uh, release areas from the TIF districts as well. Um, so that's an option, depending upon how it develop. Um, if it develops residentially, um, generally, we're not, uh, doing residential developments within a TIF. Um, so we'd look to release those areas, um, from the economic development TIFs.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, this particular property, uh, was brought up by the group of constituents that live in that neighborhood to me directly. And they've been talking about this for several years. Uh, Mr. Bozen is completely right, uh, that the neighbors have complained about this for a very long time. Uh, it, it, uh, the, the, the building is unacceptable, it's completely dilapidated. Uh, with this being in a TIF district, I think it makes acquiring it more reasonable. I would, would hundred percent be in favor of, uh, releasing this area after the building is demolished, if it, uh, with the intention of going into residential. Uh, but, uh, there has been several complaints. I did speak with neighbors again, and even with the high cost, they still want to just see it gone. I think the TIF makes this different in my mind from where it is before. So my question there would be, uh, do we have the dollars in the TIF to acquire this? And deal with any other costs that may occur?
No. And, um, and houses or is residential in a TIF district? Or is that automatically, that's automatically released, correct? Or how does that work?
The first question, we do have the funds in the TIF or we have it in bonds, um, to, to acquire the property. Um, second, I mean, we've done residential projects in the blighted TIFs. Um, if we do a residential project and use, uh, TIF incentives in an economic development TIF, there's a whole new set of rules. Um, if you remember Dyke, Iowa, uh, building out there, um, we'd have to also then set aside some of the TIF proceeds to build more housing in the city somewhere else or in that same area. So, um, generally, we have not done residential development in our economic development TIFs. Um, so we could look at, uh, obviously, we update the urban renewal reports, um, for the TIF districts every year by state code, uh, to account for new projects. We could release the, uh, site from there if we're moving ahead with a residential project.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Noel. Uh, Mr. Bozen made a proposition or suggestion, not a proposition, uh, that if we were to tear it down and, um, ask the, uh, company to build on it, is that a possibility?
The, the current owner, in discussions with the current owner, he has no interest in new construction.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, more?
Everyone's done.
Yep.
But when you say, Noel, that he has no interest in, in new construction, all I'm, all I'm proposing is that he sells the lots. I'm not proposing that he builds the houses. You know, and, and that he owns the property. We, we, we make the lot- We, we, we make the lot, uh, clean and available for, for future infrastr- or for future housing. That's not really entering into construction. Have, have we approached him that way, just, or is it, or, or is, I, I interpret what you said is that he has no intentions on wanting to build houses on there?
He, he has no interest in, in one- and two-family homes. Um, his, uh, interest is in, uh, redevelopment of existing buildings for multifamily. So I'm not sure he would sell, let us demo this either because he bought it to redevelop it. That's, that's according to him.
Attractive to the folks in, in that area.
Well, I've, I'm just going, fourteen new houses in that area, and, and the price that people are selling lots for at, at, uh, lots are going for fifty to ninety thousand if you start looking at Paradise Estates, and, and it's a, it's a prime area for, for construction in a, in a, in an area people would want to live. If you've got fourteen lots at, at, uh, fifty thousand dollars, a lot is nine hundred thousand dollars. And he didn't have to do anything but watch us tear it down. That, that's what, that's what I'm proposing. But that, I'm not, I don't have your job, and I don't want it.
Yeah, he, he has, to date, he has not entertained any-
Have we approached him on that portion of it, though?
We talked about the ability for us to demo it, um, and work with him, and he did not want to proceed. But we didn't go into further, I guess, exact details of how he could do it.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Anyone? All right, so, uh, four, five, and six, uh, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes, on four and five, no on six.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes, on all three.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes, on four, five, and six.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes, on four, five, no on six.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, could someone take seven, eight, and nine, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'd like to approve the following resolutions. First is a resolution approving an amendment and extension to the community garden agreement with the University of Northern Iowa Center for Energy and Environmental Education to utilize an expanded designated portion of Highland Park as a community garden for growing vegetables and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. Uh, number eight, a resolution approving a professional services agreement, uh, with trained technologies in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for the replacement and installation of C, uh, CO and CO NO2 sensors in the interlocks with associated exhaust fans for the Public Works Building, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And number nine, a resolution approving a federal aid agreement, project number HDP dash eight one five five, parentheses, seven eight three, close parentheses, dash dash seven one dash zero seven, with the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of two million seven hundred and eleven, um, thousand dollars nine, sorry, two million seven hundred and eleven hundred thousand nine hundred dollars in conjunction with the La Porte Road Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said dol- documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Um, any questions from anyone? Counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote on seven, eight, and nine.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let's do, let's do the last several.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a federal aid agreement, project number HDP eight one five five dash parentheses, seven eight six da- dash seven one, uh, seven one dash zero seven, with the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of two million eight hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars in conjunction with the La Porte Road Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Uh, resolution approving a federal aid agreement, project number HDP dash eight one five five parentheses, seven seven five dash seven one dash zero seven, with the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of four million three hundred and eighty-six thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars in conjunction with the La Porte Road Improvements Project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. Uh, next is a resolution approving a professional services contract with Employee and Family Resources of Des Moines, Iowa, in the amount of fifteen, uh, fifteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars to continue to provide an employee assistance program and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And, uh, resolution approving an amendment to the development and minimum assessment agreement with Airline Storage LLC, originally approved June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, to extend the date to complete phase one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Phase two completion to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and exercising the option for phase two property on or before September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, for property located at thirty-three eighteen West Airline Highway, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Questions on these items, Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Dreyer. Oh, well, Mr. Dreyer's coming up.
David Dreyer, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. This would be on number twelve. What does this, uh, resources, Employee and Family Resources get us for sixteen thousand dollars? Uh, it sounds like we've been doing it for several years. Do we have a lot of people that need help that are employed by the city? Uh,
Well, that's-
Can't we fund this ourselves? Uh, I just, I, I don't wa- I didn't know what this, I don't know what this means.
No, that's, that's our employee assistance program. Um, and I can't say, uh, through certain rules, how many people actually, uh, go to that. But it's an opportunity for, um, um, folks that work within the city to go and get counseling support, go and talk about things they may be, uh, dealing with. And so we've been doing this for a number of years, but it's our opportunity internally to be able to go and get some support, uh, in tough times when people need it.
Okay, so it's not a financial support thing, it's a-
No, 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 sir.
I, I just, never heard of it before till I saw it tonight.
We can start one if you want to.
Do what?
We can start a, a financial assistance program if you want to, but no, this is more so for the individual.
I got the money, but I'm not going to.
All right, thank you. Counsel, sir?
I, I just had a question. Have, have we, is this just a renewal of a contract? Have we used this in the past? Was it bid?
Um, I'm Missy Gierart, Assistant HR Director. It's a new company. We are starting a new contract. Um, this company offers more services than the people that we have our current contract with. It's the same price. Um, they offer more services than what our current contract does, so.
Were, were we with Unity Point before?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're go- we're moving to this company in Des Moines. How do they, how do they interface with the counselors and, and the people in this area? Are they, do they have a, an office here?
So their home office is in Des Moines, but they contract with local service providers. So all of the counselors and the people that our employees will see will be local.
Okay, and so it's the same price, it's just more services?
Yep, so right now, um, we just get counseling services, but the new EAP will be able to provide legal services, elder care services, um, budgeting services. So it'll be able to offer a lot more options to our employees for the same amount of money.
How, how many visits do they get under, under EAP? Because then after that, you got to move on to something else, correct?
And that's another option of why we chose this. Um, right now, with our current EAP, they get three visits and then they're cut off. With the new EAP, um, once they start with a counselor, they'll actually transition to our insurance provider to be able to continue to see the new, or the same, um, provider. So they don't have to, like, once they start to see a counselor, they can continue to see them, and our insurance provider will continue, um, to cover that for them.
Well, that's a plus for the employees.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, so, um, roll call vote.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, just lastly, um, today, we were joined by Maggie Michler, who is a student at Cedar Falls High School, and she's interested in politics. So, uh, she came today and she learned a lot. Uh, so we want to thank you for being here, uh, and look for great things in your future.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.